I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, held November 18th, 2014, at 6:00 PM at the council chambers. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Ilinski?
Here.
Councilmember Garrison?
Present.
Councilmember Haudig?
Here.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer is attending telephonically. Mayor Jones?
Thank you very much. Next, we have the roll call, and we have a member of the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission who will come up and share a little bit of information about herself and the Advisory Commission after we say the pledge. And we have Sarah Lacks, thanks, so wing with us tonight, and hopefully you can correct my pronunciation when you get up here. So if everyone would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's thanks, Wong, but that's pretty close.
Okay.
About myself, I am a senior this year, and this is my third year of being a member, and I'm actually holding an office this year, which is the Vice President.
Congratulations.
Thank you. CYAC, what we do is, of course, is a volunteering club, and a couple of weeks ago, we just had our first official meeting with new members, which you all will be seeing in the next meeting, I hope, December the 2nd. And we pretty much just come up with ideas for, you know, volunteering opportunities for around this holiday. I think one of the things that stood out to me, and has always been one of my favorites, is the Angel Gifts. And this year, we have decided to also, instead of doing, including the kids, we have decided to include the seniors as well. So that would be fun.
Yeah, that's great. And please be assured that if anyone on the City Council can help you, we're here for you, and just let us know.
It's much appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here tonight, and we have a certificate for you.
So on behalf of my colleagues on the City Council, we want to present this certificate to you, and we thank you for your good citizenship.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for all you do for our youth.
The next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, 12th Street will open no later than November 30th. That's the south half. They'll still be down there working on landscaping and those things. We have the bid for the north half out on the street now. Those are due in about mid-December, and we anticipate that construction will begin sometime in late January. Just a reminder, we have the ribbon cutting for the Public Safety Communications Center tomorrow at 11:00 AM at the Public Safety Facility. We also have our annual maintenance closure for the Recreation Center, which will begin next Sunday, November 23rd through Sunday, the November 30th, and they'll open again on December 1st. And the public work staff is putting up all the Christmas lights, and they'll be testing them off and on, but they'll be on permanently over the Thanksgiving holidays. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, on Sunday, I got to be the emcee for the Cottonwood Community Band Concert, their holiday concert, and it was a great event. It's really good to have a group of people who volunteer their time to entertain us. Makes our lives richer. And on Wednesday evening, tomorrow, there's another free concert at Yavapai College once again. They're trying to provide services to the community. It's going to be an interesting one. It's put on by a young musician who will be teaching a class there, and it's called "From Bach to Rock." So that's a free concert in M137 for anybody that can attend, and again, it's important to show the college that, yes, we do want these events here.
And thank you very much for all of the time you spend and donate to the community by being emcees for so many different events. You're just getting to be a regular pro.
Oh, well, thank you.
We appreciate you, though.
Thank you.
We know how much time that takes. And also on Wednesday night, tomorrow night, Roger Naylor will be introducing his book, his new book, at Fire Mountain, I believe.
Burning Tree.
Burning Tree, sorry. Okay, get it right. Thank you, Randy. Burning Tree, at 6:00 PM. And it will be his Boots Burgers to Boots. Boots to Burgers? One of those.
One of those.
A new book that he's written, so it'll be a book signing. And he writes so many great articles about the Verde Valley, and we think that he contributes a lot to positive tourism and the economy by his hard work. Okay, on November 7th, I attended the A-Tort, which I guess, Jesse, a team, is it a team?
A troupe.
A troupe of ridiculous thespians, the Much Ado About Nothing. And this play was written by Shakespeare around 1598, and Councilmember Pratt is probably a pro at this piece of literature, since he teaches these things at Yavapai College. And it was just, it was so excellent. I mean, our kids in this town, our youth, are just amazing, the kind of work that they do. And that play reminded me of another one coming up. It's December 5th through 8th. It'll be the celebration of Christmas, and it'll be the 20th anniversary. And that's where there's a cast of more than 100 people from our community, and a crew of 50 people, a live orchestra, exciting, original, traditional music, beautiful costumes, a winter wonderland with snow, life-size toy parade, exotic animals, including camels, spectacular lighting, and special effects. And again, that's December 5th through 8th. It's held at Emmanuel Fellowship, and information can be found online at efproductions.org. And again, it's amazing that our local folks are just so talented and put on this play. If you haven't seen it, it's definitely worth going to see. On November 8th, it was a busy day for most of us. I stopped by at the Verde Valley Toy Run, beginning at Walmart in the morning, and then I stopped by the Legion to greet participants in the Catholic Charities First Annual Remember in November, and attended Walking on Main, where Councilmember Pratt was emcee again, and attended Mr. Ilinski and his friends. Let's see, other people that helped you with that were Ryan Bigelow?
Ryan Bigelow, Felicia Coats helped out a lot. We had 27 volunteers for the event, so I can't name them all.
Right. And I did the home tour, and it was excellent. And as I understand, you're planning to do this every year?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
It's the council's blessing.
Yes, and how many people were you planning? How many tickets did you hope to sell?
I was gonna make a presentation.
Oh, that's right.
I can do it now, or?
No, no, wait, wait till you, till it comes. Okay, so on Monday, the 10th, I attended a memorial tree planting in honor of Yavapai College graduate, First Lieutenant Jonem Russell, and Councilmember Terrence Pratt was also there. And Lieutenant Russell died in the line of duty in Afghanistan in July 2013, and he's a local resident from Verde Santa Fe. And the dedication took place at the Butterfly Garden on the Verde Valley campus, and students and facility and staff attended the ceremony to remember Jonem and honor his service and sacrifice. Following the ceremony, I participated in reading names honoring veterans in the National Roll Call and observed the moment of silence at 11:00 AM. And I just want to, Mr. Pratt, thank Yavapai College for their participation and leadership in this event, and it was very touching. They had a mic, they had a speaker outside of the building. They were speaking the names of all of these veterans who had died in the line of duty, and it was, it just sort of echoed all over the campus, and it was really, really a special event. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, usually Vice Mayor also reads names. I'm not sure if she was able to this time.
She did.
She, she did?
She read one of the early shifts.
Okay, so thank you, Vice Mayor. We appreciate that.
Good my honor.
Okay, later in the day, I attended the Verde Front Leadership Council Meeting at the Clark Clubhouse, and we're just kind of trying to get organized with the String of Pearls and all the other things that the group is, is working on. On Veterans Day, I was invited to say a few words at the ceremony at the American Legion Post 25 in Cottonwood, and on Wednesday, I attended a class at the Cottonwood Library. We have our library manager here, Vanessa Ward, tonight, and it was about how to publish your own book. And I thought it was really interesting. The meeting room was full, so lots of community members participated, and I think we got some great information to help us out. And then that evening, I went to Orm School and spoke to the students there about local and state government. On Friday, I traveled to Phoenix for the Morrison Institute State of the State Conference, and the Morrison Institute is teaming up, I guess, with Senator John Kyle. And Senator Kyle, as you know, is one of the states what they call water buffaloes. And they're going to be working to bring collaborators together to deal with Arizona's water issues. So I'm sure we'll all be hearing more about that. And in the evening, I traveled to the Flynn Foundation's graduation and watched Cottonwood resident Ruth Ellen Ilinski graduate, and her husband was also there, and her baby, Faye, and they all celebrated her graduation. It was quite an honor to see that happen. On Sunday, I attended the Sedona Community Foundation's award ceremony, and many local organizations are receiving grants and awards this year. The Yavapai Food Council was noted as a Nonprofit of the Year, along with Rusty's Morning Star Ranch, and our very own Verde Valley Medical Center was recognized as this year's community collaborator. And that's my report for this meeting. Okay, then, any other councilmembers? Okay. The next item is introduction of new employees, and we have Carrie Cox, Library Assistant One.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Just want to introduce you to Carrie. She's our new cataloger. She comes to us from California. She's been in the Verde Valley a little over a year. She has 20 years' library experience, 10 years' cataloging, and she has her Master's of Library Science degree.
Awesome. So do you have any words of wisdom for the council tonight?
Um, let's see, this area is very similar to where I moved from. It's a dry, high-desert region, only I traded snow for mountain rain, so I love it here.
All right. Great.
I'm glad to be a part of the public library. Thank you.
Thank you for your service to the citizens of residents of Cottonwood and the Verde Valley. A lot of people from all over, especially upper Verde Valley, use the Cottonwood Library, so thank you for serving them.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Vanessa has another guest to introduce tonight as well.
And Vanessa?
My mother.
All right. Wonderful. Hello, Mom. Vanessa, Vanessa, we'd like to get a photograph of you and Carrie and the city manager, if we could.
Okay. I don't know if I want to put it with me right now.
Thank you very much. The next item is a proclamation proclaiming November as charitable tax credit giving month. And we have some guests with, with us tonight, and they'll be coming up and introducing themselves. We have Joe Hernandez. Pardon me?
Fernandez.
Fernandez.
It's okay.
Sorry about that. And if you'd just like to share a little bit about this item, and then we'll read the proclamation.
Sure. I have with me here Mary Betcher. She's on the board of Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters, and Heidi DeJevani also works with us. So thank you very much, Mayor and councilmembers, for, for this proclamation. Just a little bit on, on the proclamation and what we're trying to, to make aware. First of all, as you know, Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters is a bid around since 1971, and we have served over 10,000 youths in this area. So we're very entrenched, we're very committed, and it's a program that we're very proud of. And so one of the things we want to do is make people aware that not only can you, you know, support your local schools, which, which, you know, you can actually do with tax credit, but you can also support local charities at the same time. So it's $200 per taxpayer or $400 for a couple, in addition to. And so just getting the awareness out, we've done it to all this, all the cities here in Verde Valley and in Prescott, and we just wanted to keep that going because, you know, why would you want to maybe send that tax money? It's great, you have to, you know, we're all citizens, we have to pay our taxes, but wouldn't you like to have control of that tax money rather than filling that pothole in Yuma? Let's, let's, let's support our local charities. So thank you again.
Okay, great. So I'll read this proclamation, and then you can come up here and, and receive it. Okay, charitable tax credit giving month. Whereas the state of Arizona tax credit program enables taxpayers to contribute $200 for a single taxpayer and $400 for taxpayers filing a joint tax return, and receive a dollar-for-dollar tax credit on their Arizona tax bill. And whereas the full amount can be given to a qualified charitable organization of their choice and a school of their choice. And whereas taxpayers can use their tax dollars to express their beliefs and values by supporting a charity that does the work that they hold dear. And whereas by donating to a qualified charitable organization and a school, taxpayers are in effect given the opportunity to choose how to use a portion of their tax dollars. And whereas taxpayers no longer need to itemize in order to participate in the Arizona tax credit program. And whereas a donation that qualifies for a state tax credit is also fully deductible on a federal tax return, reducing the federal tax liability. And whereas the Arizona tax credit program is a way to keep our tax money in our community. And whereas keeping tax dollars local through the charitable giving tax credit, tax credit builds a stronger and better community at no cost to the donors. Now therefore, I, Mayor of Cottonwood, Diane Jones, in partnership with Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters, who are here tonight, do hereby declare November 2014 as charitable tax credit giving month, and for the good of the community, urge residents to keep their money local by making a donation to a qualified local charity and school.
So on behalf of my colleagues on the City Council, we would like to present this proclamation to Big Brothers Big Sisters. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you for everything.
And Joe Fernandez.
You got it.
All right. I knew that.
Presentations, certificates of appreciation to the city employees who participated in the Kids Against Hunger food packaging event held on October 11th, 2014. And Mr. Horton or, or Mr. Dawson, is, is Mr. Dawson here? There you go, right in front. If the two of you would like to share some information about this, I know that you headed up the city team and rounded up the people to participate.
Yes, thank you. The fire department's always supported Kids Against Hunger, and we've gone out and helped them out on several events that they've done in the past. When I saw them put the flyer out this year, I decided I was gonna put my shift out there to help that day. And then city manager put out a email saying, who wants to help put a team together for the city? And Steve and I spoke up right away. We co-sponsored putting a team together this, this year. We had enough to fill two full tables for two complete sessions, boxed hundreds of meals. Karen's here tonight also, so she can give us some more on, you know, what all was put together. We did, I know the fire department's table in the second session, we boxed a full pallet of meals.
As I understand it, a quarter million meals, 250,000, right?
There was a total of 250,000 meals boxed that day.
It's pretty amazing.
And we just, we just worked the two, two of the sessions.
Okay, and so, Mr. Horton, do you want to add anything? And then we'll have Karen Freeman come up and speak also, if she'd like to.
Madam Mayor, only that it really wasn't very difficult. All we had to do was put out an email, and city employees just stepped right up, as they always do, giving of their weekend free time. It was, you know, it's, it's always a privilege to give back and be around other people who like giving back. Came over with my son on Friday night to help prepare for the packing shifts, and then back on, I came back on Saturday morning. He had a date on Saturday, but came back on Saturday morning and worked on the, at the fire department table with the city manager, and it was just delightful.
Fantastic.
And not only with the city employees, we had a lot of their family members come and participate.
Great. Well, I'm very, very proud of you all. Karen, did you want to come up and share some information about past, present, and future?
Yeah, Kids Against Hunger is a humanitarian organization that organizes people to come together to pack food for the hungry, and this was our biggest event ever, and in one day, the city of Cottonwood and folks in the Verde Valley, especially the firemen who've helped us since day one, packed a quarter of a million meals in one day. We had over 670 packing volunteers and well over 60 or 70 actually working volunteers, probably more. So it was a hoot. We really had a great time. It was a lot of work, and 125,000 of those meals are gonna stay in Yavapai County, and the other 125,000 are going to Haiti, so.
So half of this, half of the amount of this work will stay locally?
Yeah.
And tell me a little bit about the macaroni and cheese. You guys found, Dan Engler was talking about, you found something, a product that you felt, I mean, the product that goes to Haiti is for starving children.
Right. That's a rice product that we've had, we've been doing this since 2011, so, and it has a longer shelf life, and it just has a lot more in the product that helps counteract malnutrition and all of that, but, and it's really good. I really like it. But we thought, we realized, as we've been doing this for the last few years, that there is a need. People aren't starving in Yavapai County, but they're hungry.
Mm-hmm.
So in collaboration with Yavapai Food Council, we, who help us distribute our food, we are now, that's our new product, and that was the first time that we've actually done that, the mac and cheese. So we're all about distributing it to anybody that needs it, to seniors and food banks, the vets. I'd like to get it out on the reservation, school backpack programs. What I'd really like to do is look for opportunities, maybe to bring schoolkids in to actually our building on Sixth Street and maybe provide a field trip opportunity, teach them a little bit about hunger and, and let them have a little opportunity to pack food and maybe bring it back to their school. So it's just an opportunity. We all had to do something bigger than ourselves, which, and we had a good time doing it. So I really appreciate it. I want to thank everybody in the city of Cottonwood, and especially the firemen who, and Larry, who really roused the troops, and, and I think we had a good time doing it, too, so thank you very much.
It was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, thank you.
So this is, we have a lot of certificates to give out here, and we're gonna, I'd like to get everyone's picture, so we're gonna have a lot of folks up here. So I'd like the council, when we're ready to take the picture, to stand back here so you can be seen. And then to help pass these out, I would like to have Steve and Larry and Karen come up and help pass these out. So when you get your certificate, just stay up here for the photo. And council will stand up so they can be included in. Okay, so let's go over here. So I'll read off the name and pass the certificate to one of these three people to hand to you. So Doug Bartosz, Jeff Jones, and Kaylee Jurnez. So if those three want to come up, and if I mispronounced your name, please take this opportunity to, to correct it. Okay. And the next is Henry? And it's Durney?
Durney.
Durney, okay. And Autumn Durney? And Diane Jones? And Larry Dawson? And Stacy Dawson? Stacy's not here. Okay, so if you'd all come up and accept your presentations or your certificate. Okay, the next is Pat Locker? Brady Casson? Okay, the next is Pat Locker, Brady Kassen, and Alex Lewis. Okay, so if you would all come up and accept your presentations. Thank you to our firefighters. So, tall guys in the middle back, so when the council stands up, they can be seen. Okay. Pat McInnis, Sean James, and Tim Bishop. Okay, we have Steve Horton, Morgan Scott. Morgan, are you in the back? And Iris Dobler. Here comes Morgan and Iris, come on in and get your certificate. Thank you for your help. Okay, Kirsten Lennon, Diana Lassen-Jones, and Trevor Faust, Robin Babbitt, Cindy Smith, Marie Carpenter, I saw Marie, Cheryl Miskiel, Sandra Jacobs, I'm not sure if, oh, Sandra's here, great. Rudy Rodriguez, Holly Rodriguez, Christina Rodriguez, and Anthony Rodriguez. Okay, council, if you could stand on the sides here so we can see you. Kyla, Kyla, it's gonna be up to you to get us where you can see everyone's head. You want to stand here, Larry?
Don't stand on the chair.
You're tall, how about here? Okay. Can you see us? Everybody's head sticking up?
I can't see Iris.
Thank you for helping so much.
You too, yeah.
What did I do with my agenda? And then I left that up there. It's okay. Okay, the next item is finally, I tried to-
Tried to sneak it in there, didn't you?
-preempt him. Councilmember Ilinski will give a review of the Historic Home Tour held on November 8th, 2014.
I was hoping Ryan Bigelow would be here too, but he must be camera shy. So I'll go ahead and charge forward here. So we had a Historic Home Tour in Cottonwood on November 8th in conjunction with Walking on Main, and it was the first year that we'd ever done an event like that. And it was, it was in partnership with the city, of course, and the Historic Preservation Commission, but it was really, you know, Ryan Bigelow, myself, and Felicia Coats that sort of spearheaded the whole thing. And Felicia didn't want to be here tonight either, and she's also camera shy, and I don't blame her, so. Anyway, we presented a month or so before the event, just to let council know what our benchmarks were, and I think we, at that point, indicated we hoped to get 60 people to participate. And if that were the case, we would raise $1,500 for the civic center. And all the proceeds for the event, it was a walking, self-guided home tour just in the Old Town area, all the proceeds for the event were going to go to the restoration effort of the civic center, so. We had 27 volunteers. Baron Ajad volunteered, Morgan Scott volunteered, Vice Mayor volunteered, and so too did the mayor from the city side. And we had a lot of folks from the Gray Fox subdivision volunteered and all throughout the city, so we had a great volunteer base. So, we exceeded all of our expectations. We had 76 attendees for the event, and we had surveys that everyone could fill out, and almost 80% of the people that attended filled out a survey, so. I don't want to go through everything, but the most important things, I think, most of the attendees were from the local Verde Valley area, 52% of the attendees were from our area, 30% from Phoenix, and then we had one person from Prescott, five folks from Flagstaff, three from Tucson, and two from Globe.
Wow, that's neat.
Arizona, so yeah, the word, we got the word out, which is good. Most of the attendees rated the tour on a, you know, A, B, C, F kind of scale, 90% rated it B and above, so 45% of the attendees said it was excellent, which is great. And only one person said that they wouldn't come back next year, so that's not, that's not bad. Everybody else is definitely going to come back next year. And overall, everybody really enjoyed it, so. We put out another survey for the volunteers to find out if they can, you know, help us plan a better event for next year, and we'll be getting that back in shortly. So anyway, bottom line, we raised about $2,400 for the civic center. We got just a ton of people that wanted to contribute, that ran ads in our map that we handed out for the folks, and we had, you know, the business community was very supportive here in Old Town, and I think all in all, it was a great event. So I'm proud of all the volunteers, I'm proud we made it happen, and I look forward to doing it next year with the city's blessing. And the thing too, that's great about it, is once the word got out, I have received a lot of phone calls from folks that used to live here, old, old people, that want to share the history.
Old timers.
Yeah, the son of the bootlegger, the Contrares Pool Hall was on the, was on the tour, and his son, who's in his 70s now, lives in San Jose, California, he contacted me, so I've been trying to conduct interviews with him and recording those interviews so that he can give us some background information. And another home that was on the tour was the Mariani Brothers Building, the grandson of Guido Mariani contacted me, and he wants to share some information, so, you know, that's exciting. So we have a lot of people that want to share the history of Cottonwood, and this has given them an opportunity to do that, and best of all, it provided some money for the civic center, so I look forward to spending that money.
And we know that you've donated time and things to painting and putting new floor in the entryway to the civic center, and we appreciate your leadership. I think I can safely speak for all members of our council that we appreciate the work you've done on this, and your passion for the history of our community.
Thanks.
And the many hours that you've spent.
Yeah, it took a lot of hours.
Recording history and all of that.
It was a big event to plan, but the other good thing too is we have a really great volunteer base now, so I think next year's event will run a lot smoother. Everybody was very generous with us this year, I think, because it was an inaugural event. They were a little lenient, will be judged a lot harder, obviously, for the second year, but we hope to make it a much better, bigger event the second year.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Fantastic job.
For your support.
Okay, the next item is Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anyone who wishes to speak about an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, so I don't see any forms filled out for this item, so if there is no one who would like to speak for this item, we'll go ahead and close the floor to the public. Approval of the minutes, these are the regular meeting minutes of November 4th, 2014. If there are no corrections, do I hear a motion?
Will we approve the meeting minutes?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Dowling made the motion, and Mr. Garrison seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Are you there, Vice Mayor?
I can, aye.
Okay. Vice Mayor says aye for the record. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one, and the only item, is application for acquisition of control for the current liquor license for the Cottonwood Food City Number 37. Michael J. Basha is the agent.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Councilmember Garrison moved to approve the consent agenda with Councilmember Ilinski seconding it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, and the Vice Mayor voted aye. Item number 11, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is a ward of bid for the biosolids hauling and disposal for the wastewater treatment facility. Mr. Biggs.
Madam Mayor, council, good evening. This evening I asked to award a contract for biosolids hauling and disposal to SRE Transportation. This is to replace a previous contract that is expired. It's a single one-year contract with two potential renewals, a council discretion. Each of those renewals is subject to a 3% annual increase, also a council discretion. The wastewater plant produces 1,750 tons of biosolids a year. This needs to be hauled to a landfill in a regulatory compliant manner. SRE Transportation's cost is $53.50 per ton. Any questions?
Any questions, council members? If not, any comments from the public? I would entertain a motion. Mr. Garrison?
I'll move to approve the bid.
Motion carries. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number two is award of the contract for utility bill printing and mailing services. Mr. Rodriguez.
Let me put my name on it.
Oh.
I didn't realize.
Roger was gonna-
I, I don't, I'm not even on that page yet, I have to go there, so hang on.
My fault.
That's okay.
You're more than welcome to.
No, so here I go, I'm there. Okay. So, we have Roger Biggs with us, from the Utilities Department Administrative Manager.
Once again, thank you.
You weren't moving, so I kind of thought I goofed.
No, no, I'm just carrying both of these.
All right.
I asked the council to award a contract to Information Outsource for utility bill printing and mailing services. This is kind of a new idea for us, this has always been an in-house process. We produce 9,900 bills a month, and it's always had its share of problems. There's always deadlines, there's always machine issues, and I would rather see our personnel focus on customer service and attention to the phone calls and the people in the lobby rather than be in the back room eating on this machine with a hammer. So, in an effort to improve things, we went out for proposals for our purchasing procedures, and a committee of purchasing agent, finance, personnel, utility staff scored these proposals separately. We met as a committee and tallied our scores, and Information Outsource was the unanimous winner. They have a secure data transfer system, they have a mirrored off-site data center, they have disaster recovery, they have in-house maintenance on their equipment, they do this service for a half dozen cities within the state of Arizona, and the cost is comparable to our in-house costs. Anyway, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, the tally sheet I have actually has two other groups scoring higher than Information Outsource. Pinnacle Data scored 94, and then InfoSend scored 93.75, and Pinnacle scored, and Information Outsource scored 90.25. Do I have the wrong data sheet?
No, you have it correct, but there were other factors at play here. Some of these were out-of-state companies, we thought they were not as accessible to us if there was an issue. They were not necessarily specialists in municipal utility bill production. There were just other factors at play.
Okay. It concerned me that they scored, two other companies scored higher-
I understand.
...didn't get the contract.
Mr. Ilinski?
Well, awarding this bid and moving this process, you know, to a private contractor, will that settle some of our utility billing issues that we've had as far as there not being enough information on that?
Yes, we hope, we hope it will. It'll be more timely, more consistent, we won't have some of the deadline problems that we're faced with now.
Okay.
Basically, we send them a coded file, they produce the bills, they postmark them using our postal account.
Okay.
And we have made strides as far as some of the problems we've had with the bills and the information that it contained.
Okay. Then another question is, I know that we often include letters in the bills when we mail them out, utility bills, will we still have that option to do that?
We'll have that option. There's a cost of $99 per roughly 9,900 inserts for single-sided grayscale-
Okay.
...up to around $500 for a double-sided color insert. Those are additional costs just for printing, there's no cost for folding an insertion.
Okay, and they'll hand all that down wherever they are?
They will.
Okay, great.
Just an additional file that we send them.
Same as, it would have been additional cost for us to mail those out in-house anyway, so it's not, okay, I understand.
Mr. Garrison?
What was the staffing? Who, was there one person that was in charge of putting all these out every time, or was that a shared workload, and does that get relieved, or how does that get taken?
It takes about six hours per run, there's six runs per month, and that's if everything goes right, which it never did. So the six hours occasionally ran into several days, and it would require us pulling in other staff to sit at a table and actually hand stuff envelopes to get things out on time. We always had to meet a 15-minute window at the post office to get the bills to them. If we missed that window, we had to wait 24 hours, so there were always deadlines or always problems. And the staff that would be doing this, I want to spend time helping the customers, not running this equipment.
Okay, so the time that was spent on this will be just assimilated back into the regular duties of the office?
Yes, I think we can do a better job of running things.
Yeah. Mr. Pratt?
I did notice that you mentioned that, that at times you had to pull in various different people from all different-
Anybody we could find.
Job to stuff these, and so you had technicians and other people helping stuff the bills, and that probably isn't a good idea.
No.
So, I think this probably makes sense.
This, the lease on this equipment is up July 2015, and the company that manufactured it and supports it now will be dropping this product line and basically getting out of the business, so that tells you something about the equipment right there.
Yeah, you mentioned repair crews, so you actually had to pull people off jobs that really needed to be done to help with this other thing.
Got to get the bills out.
Yeah.
I think it is important, after the hearing the other night, some of the complaints of citizens and utility customers, I think that keeping, I know that you run on a skeleton crew, just as everyone in the city does, there's no extra fat in the number of people that we have, and I would like to see those people spending their time on customer relations, customer services.
So would I. We miss too many phone calls that come in that are not able to be answered, they get dropped. There's, the wait lines at the windows are too long. We can do a better job, and this is one way of accomplishing that.
I agree. So, any other comments from members of the public on this item? Any more comments from members of the council?
Madam Mayor, I would add that I, if I may.
Yes, please.
That I spoke with Roger and Rudy about this, and after the equipment lease expires next summer, this contract will be effectively cost-neutral. So, it really won't cost us any anything. I think that's worth noting.
Thank you. Mr. Pratt?
Is it time for a motion?
It is, please.
I move to award the contract for utility bill printing and mailing to Information Outsource.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Vice Mayor? Was that an aye, Vice Mayor? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, I think, I think we're done. Elimination of the shared in-house safety specialist position approved in this year's budget and authorization to advertise and/or contract for an outside safety consultant.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for letting me present this. The budget was approved to have a shared four or five municipality, shared position, employee-type position for a safety person for this year. Not all of the other municipalities in our group that had discussed it got their budgets approved, got budget amounts approved. Only Camp Verde and Cottonwood had our budget amounts approved. So, we didn't feel it was right to try to hire a part-time employee or wait another year for a full-time employee to try to get the other group municipalities together into the group again. What Camp Verde and we would like to do is use the budget monies that we had that were approved to go with a safety consultant rather than trying to get, to hire a part-time employee or a full-time employee that we couldn't afford right now to do and may not need full-time right now. So, my request is to be able to change this, eliminate the shared in-house safety position, and go with a consulting position. We will have them work, we will give them a list of types of things that we feel they would need to work on, as you would any consultant, and they would work as a consultant on their own time with their own equipment when they feel it needs to be done, unless we have some emergency, like an accident or something, that we would need to call the men on, and hopefully that won't happen. So, we'd like to go with the consultant idea and start in January rather than waiting till April, which is what my budget funds were to be for, because we won't be using someone on a full-time basis, and I think I can get by on the budget amount that was approved or less for the remainder of this fiscal year.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the council? Members of the public? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move, I'll make a motion. I move to eliminate the position of safety specialist and authorize staff to advertise and/or contract for workplace safety consulting services from an outside consultant beginning on or after January first, twenty-fifteen.
Second.
Mr. Garrison made the motion, Mr. Howdy seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Airport lease, thank you Ms. Dobler for your time. Airport lease, ground lease, Red Rock Skydiving. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, member of the council, Morgan Scott with Development Services. In two thousand nine, the city renewed an existing land lease with Red Rock Skydiving at the airport. That lease expires December thirty-first of this year. There is a ten-year renewal option for the city. Staff's recommending at this point that the city test the market by not renewing that lease and going back out for proposals. If Red Rock, if council chooses to go in that direction, Red Rock would be more than welcome to provide a proposal, and if they are indeed the best company, the staff would renew, staff would recommend to council that we renew that lease, or not renew it, but get a new lease with council. This opportunity would give us a couple opportunities. One, test the market, find out who else is there, who is looking, who wants to come in to expand the airport, promote the airport, promote the city. It also allows us an opportunity to correct several things that were wrong with the lease, such as the insurance requirements, such as the lease rate, such as lease term. Right now, it's a ten-year renewal option. The commissions was taken to the Airport Commission, November fifth of this year, they did recommend that the lease not be renewed. They did, however, recommend that the lease go month-to-month until a new, obviously giving Red Rock the opportunity to go month-to-month until a new tenant is brought on. The reason for that is because of the long procurement process. It's probably going to be March first of next year before a new tenant could even be brought forth. So, this would allow someone to, a business or someone to occupy that space until March first of next year. I did receive an email today from the FAA. The FAA was concerned that the city might be confused. You're all familiar, the FAA is currently looking into another lease we have right now. Steve's probably looking to me confusion, because you probably haven't got that email yet. I just got it about five minutes ago. The FAA thought that the city might be confused, that this had to do with the other lease that they're looking into. This has nothing to do with that. This lease has nothing to do with the FAA's investigation. This has whether or not to do with whether the city's getting the best use out of this land, the skydiving land lease or not. So, I just wanted to clear that up, because you'll probably hear about that. We'll probably get an email or response back to the FAA in the next week or so. Oh, whichever direction the council chooses, we do need to decide the ownership of all the improvements. Basically, all that's being leased right now is a, is the land underneath the improvements. They've brought in utilities, they've brought in a building, they've done quite a few improvements. As of December thirty-first of this year, or after the expiration of this, I'm sorry, after the expiration of this lease, those improvements transfer to the city. So, whether the city renews the lease or doesn't renew the lease, we need to decide whether or not we're going to turn those improvements over to the tenant or not. That's something, a direction we need to move, or we need to decide tonight. And again, staff's opinion is it's the best interest of the city and of the airport that we go out and test the market and find out who is looking, who is considered opening a business here. Oh, one more thing, I apologize. This would in no way limit Red Rock, there was some confusion that we were actually kicking them off the airport. This would not in any way limit them from doing business on the airport. They just wouldn't have access to that land lease, which I understand would impact their business, but it's not, we are not in any way restricting them from doing business on the airport.
Okay. Thank you.
So, would you explain the last part? I kinda missed something.
Sorry. There was some confusion that we were not allowing a business to do business on the airport, which under FAA regulations is absolutely, we cannot do that. We cannot restrict someone from doing business. All we're talking about is renewing or not renewing a land lease. We're not talking about disallowing a business from doing activities at the airport. I hope that makes sense.
Mr. Ilinski?
How, how would Red Rock's skydiving function, or any skydiving business function without leasing land from the airport?
I'm not sure. But the point is, we're not disallowing someone from doing business on the airport. But yes, I, I understand that a business needs, or a business of that type probably needs a location to operate out of.
So, a place in the community could be found, another business, and they could transport via van, or, or how would that work if they?
Yeah, or operate, they could just drop off at the terminal. I'm, I'm not sure how they could do business, but we're not telling someone.
We're not telling them they can't, okay. I wanted to get, since the Airport Commission is an advisory board to the city council, and the Airport Commission has met and also are recommending the same thing as staff, I would like to have the president, Mr. Mooney, come up and share information with the council and the public about the Airport Commission's decision.
The Airport Commission did decide to agree with staff and not recommend, excuse me, continuing this lease. We'd like to see the lease revisited, we'd like to have it put back out for bid. And we did have a few other issues with Red Rock Skydiving. They have been a bit of a difficult tenant. As you will see in your materials, there have been several instances where we had altercations with skydivers, and this resulted in the police being called to settle the situation. But we want to give, certainly give them the opportunity to continue. We do support business activities at the airport completely. Any other questions?
Any questions for the Airport Commission?
I have a question.
Mr. Ilinski?
Just about the lease, and I don't know if Mr. Mooney can answer that, or maybe Steve Horton, we talked about maybe needing to make some changes to the lease, and what would those changes be?
So, is that something that you need Mr. Mooney to answer, or can staff, would that be staff?
I'm just not sure if the commission, Airport Commission, had reviewed that or not, but...
Well, I'd probably defer to Morgan on exactly what the commissioner or staff had in mind.
And if you want to just have a seat, and then if we need you, we'll call you back. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't answer that. I should address that sooner. The commission had a concern about the lease rate. The lease rate is not that low. Red Rock's currently paying, I think it's sixteen cents per square foot per year. There are some other hangers at the airport, which they're paying thirty cents per square foot per year, some others that are paying fifty cents per square foot per year. However, the lease that just came out for the land outside of the fence, the appraisal came out at one cent per square foot per year. So, the lease rate in itself is not that low, though I'd like to see it possibly adjusted. The insurance requirements, and if you don't mind, I might ask Iris Dobler to come up to talk about the insurance requirements.
Okay.
And then finally is the term. And then, actually, one more, and that is ownership of improvements. If you do want to continue a lease, do you want to take ownership of the improvements? Do you want to, in which case, if the city's now leasing a building, the rate should definitely be increased. Right now, all the city is leasing is raw land, whereas if you're leasing a building, the rate should be substantially higher.
Okay, can I just ask?
Yes, Mr. Ilinski?
The reason why Red Rock Skydiving's lease is so low is because they were just leasing the raw land. They put all the improvements on that land. Okay.
That's correct. It's important to remember, they are just leasing right now raw land because they paid for all the improvements.
Okay. So, on those properties that we have up there where there, there are improvements existing, we charge much more for those leases?
Actually, the city doesn't do many of the improvements. In most cases, the city just leases the land, and someone else came in to build either a hangar or roads and sewer and everything else and bring it into it. So, in most situations, the city's only leasing the land.
But isn't there a situation that's occurred where some of that has come back to the city, and we're now the landlords of the, both the land and the improvements? Or has that, have we just continued to renew the leases again and again, and the property has never come back with the improvements to the city?
To my understanding, there's not, we don't own, there's only one hangar that the city built.
Okay.
And there's also a difference between in the fence and out of the fence. The, the skydiving tends to be on the other side of the fence, so it, it doesn't fall into the same range as the land where the hangers are.
Okay.
Inside that have direct access to the, to the airplanes and the airport and the runway.
Okay, that's good.
But if that's true, then the, the new ones on the east side that Bob.
Backus.
Backus has built, they're outside the fence too, but the FAA is like wanting to control that.
You're talking about airport, the whole airport property, which is huge compared to the, the land that's actually controlled as airport runway area and ramp, which is inside that fence. So, it, it's, there's a little, there's a, there's a separation, even though the road getting into the current facility is gated and controlled access and all that, it, it falls outside that fence.
It's not controlled access.
It's considered runway and ramp.
One more item to consider, because I know that sounds ridiculous, that outside the fence is paying one cent per square foot per year, and inside they're paying anywhere from fifteen cents to fifty-one cents. But also has to do with the term of the lease. Inside the fence, we're looking at anywhere from five, ten, to twenty-five year leases. The outside fence, the nineteen-eighty-three lease is a one-hundred-year lease. Obviously, when you extend your lease, you're going to pay substantially less.
And I guess there's also an issue of the, the size of the leasehold will determine the, the per square foot, you know, fair market rate. And we do have a recent appraisal that, that we got as we were working and are working to address the FAA's concern that Morgan alluded to. But an appraisal is a snapshot in time, and it's based on previous market sales or comparable sales, market conditions. If there were to be a procurement of this or any other airport property, that would provide more information on, on the market value, the current market value of airport property.
Okay. Okay, we do have some members of the public that would like to speak on this item. Mr. Carl Priggy. And each person has five minutes to speak.
Five minutes is a little short for something as important to the city as this is.
The council, five minutes for speakers, but this is an owner. Is five minutes reasonable to the council?
I think because he's the owner, I think he should be given more time to make his case. I mean, people in support or against, I think if we could limit that to five minutes, I'd be fine with that, but he's probably got a lot more to say than, than most folks would being the owner.
So, is that? Give him some leeway to speak.
Okay, so we'll give you some leeway on time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. We've been here trying to operate and protect our customers, protect the city, and we've been getting a lot of pushback from some of the people. Before I get into a lot of that, some of the things that were said earlier, how do we operate without land? That's going to be really impossible, especially when there's lots of other land at the airport that somebody else can, can lease. They don't have to lease the spot we currently do. There's lots of other land there. So, there's really no reason, that's really no reason to push us out when there's all this other land. Somebody mentioned that the police had to come in and settle situations, but the police never settled any situations. We settled them afterwards. The improvements, it was mentioned that they revert to the city on twelve-thirty-one. Well, according to the contract and the lease, they do not revert to the city on twelve-thirty-one. Those are other things that, that will come out. There's been a number of issues. We have an email here from Morgan Scott saying below is a list of the companies and individuals that, who have requested to be notified if the lease becomes available. On that list is a man named Jim Gay. Jim Gay wrote us a letter saying he's never been interested, yet Morgan Scott says he's requested to be notified if this lease becomes available. Another name, Bob Luna. Morgan Scott says he has requested to be notified if the lease becomes available. When questioned, Bob Luna said he's never been interested in it. Another person on the list, Green Light. They said, he says, they have requested to be notified if the lease becomes available. We called Green Light, they said they are not and never have been. So, this list of people that Morgan Scott put out saying they have requested to be notified, what kind of validity does it hold? None of these people have requested to be notified that the lease is available. There was questions about police reports. Well, they've attached a number of police reports. I don't know if you've gone through them all, but some of these police reports are rather interesting. Here's one. Says the police had to come out, and there was somebody, the previous FBO mechanic was out there on the airport throwing garbage all over the airport, throwing garbage on top of Hangar B, and we called them in to, to take care of this. We called the police in to help protect the airport, protect the city, because if an airplane taxis into some of this garbage, the city could get sued for having to strewn about. And so, we're being held accountable because we called the police and helped protect the airport from the FBO that was going berserk. What kind of sense does that make? Then there's an item about a hang glider. We called the police again. That's what they're there for, to help protect us, help protect the city. We had some parachutes coming down. These hang gliders came in and approached the parachutes in such a manner that they had to take evasive maneuvers to get away from them. These parachutes had paying passengers, tourists on them that we needed to protect. Hang gliders, according to the federal aviation regulations, are to have no right-of-way over anything. They are to give right-of-way to everything else, including the parachutes. Yet, they approached them, causing them to take evasive maneuvers to get away. And we had discussions with them later on, and... And we've had discussions with them later on, and in the past year or so, they've been staying to the north and we've been staying to the south, and there haven't been any incidents in a while. And again, the police did not do anything with that. We worked that out with them several meetings later. So, there's just one item after another in these police reports that don't apply to us. And that's what the Cottonwood Police Force is there for. They're there to help protect the citizens, the tourists, and the city. It was mentioned that there was a letter from the FAA, and I also noted that it hadn't been shared with you. So, I'll read it, because it's pretty important. "Morgan Scott, we received a report from Carl Priggy that the city does not wish to grant a lease option to Red Rock Skydiving. Considering all the years that skydiving has had a presence at Cottonwood Municipal Airport, what is currently preventing the city from allowing Mr. Priggy to exercise the lease option to continue operating at the airport? Parachuting is an aeronautical activity. Assurance 22 requires that airport sponsors make the airport available for all kinds and classes of aeronautical activities. This would include Red Rock Skydiving. Why would the city wish to close a commercial aeronautical business and cause it to vacate the airport? Aeronautical users are subject to reasonable charges to make the airport as self-sustaining as possible. Red Rock Skydiving has a rent schedule that has escalated each year. Not by much, but it has gone up each year. Furthermore, the rental rate is subject to renegotiation when the option is exercised. By contrast, the rental rates of the airport non-aeronautical tenants do not escalate, and some do not pay any rent at all. Why is the city seeking to remove an aeronautical tenant that is paying rent to the city and is subject to future rent increases? A rental rate comparison would be a useful exercise. The non-aeronautical tenants, for the most part, pay one cent per square foot for their leasehold property." As an aside, we're currently paying four times that. What is the rental rate per square foot for Red Rock Skydiving and for other tenants who occupy or own hangars on the airport? The FAA Land Use Report disclosed compliance shortcomings with the city's management of non-aeronautical tenancy and not aeronautical tenancy. Therefore, we are unsure why the city is taking consequential action against an aeronautical tenant. While non-aeronautical tenants are supposed to pay fair market value rental rates, the aeronautical tenants are subject to a different standard. Aeronautical tenants are supposed to be subject to reasonable rates that will help make the airport as self-sustaining as possible, taking into account factors such as the volume of traffic and the economy of collection and affect market conditions. Since there is more elasticity with the rates that aeronautical tenants must pay, we did not report a problem with the city's management of aeronautical tenancy. What issues are motivating the city to displace Red Rock Skydiving from the airport? We would appreciate feedback so we can understand why the city has made the decision to displace Red Rock Skydiving from the airport. We look forward to a reply in the next 20 days. Thank you, Tony Garcia, FAA Airports Division, Western Pacific Region, Los Angeles." And not renewing the lease would effectively remove us from the airport. So, they are concerned about it, and that has to do with, it sounds like it has to do with that last letter that came out from the FAA that the city is, city management is currently scrambling with. There have been, at this Airport Commission meeting, there was a number of biases running around. There were people saying things that weren't true. There was people coming back and saying, "Well, that's what I was told." So, it was just one bad rumor after another. And they were given information and they made a decision based on information that isn't even presented here. They've removed it because it was all false. We were accused of not having insurance. We've had insurance for seven and a half years from the same carrier, and it's been presented to the city every year. Yet, somebody made the claim that we didn't have it, so it became true because that person made the claim. So, all these claims that were made appear to be very biased and don't have any facts behind them. And every time we questioned the person who was giving them out, he always said, "Well, that's what I was told." He never did any investigation himself, never read the lease. In fact, during one of the confrontations we had with a hang glider who was breaking Federal Aviation Regulations, the city police came out and the airport manager came out. And the airport manager defended the hang gliders over the city and the tenants of the airport and didn't follow the lease. He told the police that these things in the lease were not true and that the amount of land that we lease was much smaller. We had people trespassing over our property, and the airport manager said, "No, that's not true. They don't lease that property," when in fact, we did. We had the hang gliders getting too close to the parachutes and causing them to make evasive maneuvers. We, again, the airport manager denied that to the police. So, there is a lot of bias issues going on here, and we're really frustrated for it and with it. We're trying our best to follow the Federal Aviation Regulations and therefore protect the city, protect ourselves, and most importantly, protect our tourists and our passengers that make Cottonwood and the airport and Red Rock Skydiving a destination.
Thank you.
That's all I have at the moment.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Can I ask Mr. Priggy just a couple of questions if you'd like?
Okay, Mr. Priggy, Mr. Ilinski?
I just, I want to be clear on the improvements that you made there, because you said that the lease actually doesn't state that the improvements would go back to the city, but the way I read it, it does. And I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page.
There are three contradicting statements in the lease.
Okay.
And since the lease was drafted by the city, then the favor of the lease goes to us. The one in question is which one?
I'm Sharon, calling from Red Rock Skydiving. May I?
Yes, certainly.
Can she answer that question?
Yes. Members of the council. Section 7, the Construction and Improvements D, says removal. "The tenant, as owner of any structures or improvements, shall have the right from time to time to remove or demolish all or any part of such structures or improvements on the property without any obligation to reconstruct improvements thereon and without providing any notice to or obtaining the approval of landlord, provided, however, that the tenant shall continue to be obligated to pay the lease payment." And then we have in section 10, Ownership of Improvements, and this is where the, it defaults to you. During term of waste, all improvements constructed on the premises by the tenant, as permitted by this lease, shall be owned by the tenant until expiration of the term or sooner termination of this lease, unless earlier dedicated and accepted by landlord and be as expiration of lease. All improvements on the premises at the final expiration of the term shall, without compensation to tenant, become landlord's property free and clear of all claims to or against them by tenant or third person. At the final expiration of the term and any extension of holdover, the premises shall be free and clear of all mortgages and liens." And then there's one other spot here. This would be number 14, Trade Fixtures and Personal Property. Except as otherwise provided in this lease or as provided in separate agreements, any movable trade fixtures, signs, equipment, or other personal property installed in or on the premises by tenant, so long as the removal will not result in structural damage, shall remain the property of tenant. Tenant shall have the right to provide, provided they are not in default at any time, to remove or permit removal of any and all of the same. Tenant shall be considered to have abandoned same, if not removed, within 15 days of the termination of this lease. So, speaking to my own counsel, there is clearly a conflict here in this, and the favor does go into ours, and that building is ours, does not immediately default to the city. And I do believe that's one of the things that they're trying to do, is say, as soon as December 31st ends, January 1st, you get it all.
Madam, may I offer a clarification? Because I think I can address that concern. I don't think it's staff's position at all or recommendation or the commission's that, that the building, that the improvements revert to the city. I don't think that's the issue for staff or the commission, and it would be staff's recommendation that whatever the council decides, that any holdover term include the tenant's right to take the building back. That's, I don't, I haven't heard that's an issue for staff or the commission, and we don't think it should be an issue for the council either.
According to the city council agenda, the justification benefit issue is getting the building. The sole justification.
The justification benefit issue is on the... But that's what that says, and so I wanted to make sure that that was clear, that it is just the land that we're leasing, the building is ours, and does not automatically revert just because of reasons.
Right, but upon expiration of the lease, then if you don't either demolish it or take it with you, then it does become the city's.
Yes, if we don't do something with it, yes. But, but one of those spots too says I have 15 days.
After the end of the lease.
Well, and that's reasonable, I mean...
So, that's, so I want you all to be aware that the building doesn't just automatically become yours. And that, that I feel has been portrayed in here.
And that's Development Services Manager Morgan Scott. That's what he's after with his justification. He wants the building.
I think, Madam Mayor and counsel, that statement is perhaps misplaced in that heading, but that is absolutely not either Mr. Scott's or staff's position or motivation.
But I just want to make it clear too, that you, you put the improvements on the property knowing full well you didn't own the property. If the lease was terminated, you would either have to take that with you or, or give it to the city.
Right.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's fairly ambiguous. There's no specifics. And I am looking at that, I've looked at all those sections and thought there was contradiction. Then I look at 14, and it says movable trade fixtures, signs, equipment, and then other personal property. So, that includes a lot of things. You could consider the building personal property since you paid for it. So, yeah, that's, there does seem to be contradictions there, right? Seems like two to one for you guys.
So, that's why we're wanting to use the option to renew the lease for 10 years.
I have another question, just interest. Approximately, how many jumpers do you have a month? Do you know the average over a year?
Every month is different. We have several thousand tandems.
A year?
First jumpers a year, yes.
Oh, and how many of those are from out of town? Do you ever track that?
Most of them. 99.9% are from out of town.
Right, so you are...
There just isn't that kind of volume here in Cottonwood.
And out of that, there's quite a bit that comes from other countries.
Oh, really?
And over 50 countries, 56 countries.
56 countries?
Come to jump with us, to Red Rock Skydiving. We're almost, we're the only skydiving in Arizona.
Yeah.
They come to join, you know, to see the scenery, the area. We've been blessed to have, you know, a wonderful run for seven and a half years, you know. But pulling this lease from us and asking us to go to a month a month, that's not viable either. Either. I don't think a single company business could run on a month to month. And that's why I want, but to take that from us pretty much closes our business, because then, you know, we've got the lease issue and the month to month, I can't do that, you know. This is a family-owned business, you know. My husband and I run it, own it. My son ran it for the entire workforce. I mean, this is, you know, we're not just talking, you know, land lease and we're people, you know. And yeah, we've had a couple of issues with the lease, but that was solely out of the safety of our people, you know. And, and we really are working it. This was all last year, 2013. Nothing has happened since then. We had a meeting, we sat down with the skydivers, Mr. Bartosz was there, the skydivers and hang gliders. And we came to an amicable agreement, and nobody's been there really since then. We will see one other one in here. I called the police, me, because I had a drunk belligerent there trying to beat down my doors, trying to attack somebody. So, yeah, we are calling the police because we are trying to keep safety there. That really is our point. Our point is not to harass people, to cause trouble. We're here to skydive. We're here to promote Cottonwood. Really, that's all we're trying to do. And I know people don't like us. I'm sorry. I know what we've done to people, that they don't like us so much. But, and then there's people who love us. And you talk to any skydiver that comes through, look at, you know, TripAdvisor. You know, they love it. It's great. And that's a reflection on the city of Cottonwood.
We've got a lot of word of mouth repeat business.
And then we also have experienced helpers who come out here to jump. And I have staff. So, if we close, my staff...
And in order, if the city and Airport Commission would like to generate more business, then they have an opportunity to lease other land parcels at the airport to other businesses. And then there could, there could be other types of aeronautical activities. They could be the same type and have competition in a competitive atmosphere.
Why not? Why not? Why get rid of one? Why not bring more people?
I know there's more than one wine tasting room in Old Town. We haven't run out the others. But we got more than one, and so there's competition.
I do have a question for, I don't know if it'd be Steve or Morgan, but I thought that hang gliders, I was under the impression whether faults or right, that hang gliders had first rights to airspace because they couldn't really control where they were going, but that's not so? That was in the case of the lawsuit of the city, I think.
And it's in the far...
Yeah.
It's right in here. Hang gliders have no rights. Hang gliders have to give the right of way to everything else in the air.
And how do they do that?
And if you're referring to the balloon incident, the balloon has the right of way over everything. Those two vehicles were at opposite ends of the right of way spectrum, and yet they still came together.
And that's, that's true, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, how does a hang glider get out of the way? They, they turn their hang glider somewhere else, or they just don't use the airport? But they have a right to use the airport, I understood?
They, they have a certain right to use the airport, as long as they don't violate other...
Get in the way of an airplane or...
Regulations, right.
Something like that.
And they've been known to do that because they fly right through the airport traffic pattern, at traffic pattern altitude. Airplanes are constantly trying to, having to maneuver to get away from them because they popped into the view. They fly over the city of Cottonwood, which is illegal. They are not allowed to fly over congested areas of cities, towns, or settlements. And having a landing area on the other side of Cottonwood just attracts them to break those regulations.
So, it sounds like you don't like them very much.
No, 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 don't get us wrong. No, no.
That's what I'm hearing.
I've flown hang gliders. I know about them.
And that's, and that's why we talk with them, because there's no reason why we can't share the airspace, but let's do it safely, because they're never on the Cottonwood Unicom. They're never on that, and we always are. So, we can't talk to them and say, you know, "Hang gliders, we've got parachutes in the air. Can you go north?" They just blindly fly. And, but since that meeting that we've had, and we've talked to, to the, who is he?
One of the officers of the Hang Glider Association.
We just talked to him today, you know, and said, "Look, you know, we're doing good, aren't you thinking?" And he said, "Yeah, I think we're doing good. You know, yeah, and you're going to a few bad apples, we all do. But, yeah, don't get me wrong. When we see them, we're on alert." You know, I call up to my aircraft and I tell them, and they keep an eye out for it. But since we've had that meeting with Mr. Bartosz and the hang gliders and a couple of other city officials, and I think Luder was there, but anyway, they have done whatever they can to keep the airspace somewhat separate and have done a great job, and you will see that we haven't had an incident since then.
They thought it would be a lot of fun to fly up next to them, and then finally a light bulb came on when we advised them that we don't even let our, we don't let other skydivers fly up next to them.
Too dangerous. We won't do that. We won't do that to our customers.
Any other questions for the Priggies from council?
I don't know if anybody's interested. I have that FAA letter.
Sure.
If you have copies, yeah?
Yes.
And you're Sharon?
I'm Sharon, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. And did you, were you finished then with your comments?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate you letting me interject with Carl.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we call up the next speakers, is there anything that staff wants to comment on with those comments? Randy? Randy?
Um, Madam Mayor, council members, I'll just clarify that I think the issue here, and I think it's the same with the commission, is Mr. Priggy has just been difficult to deal with. When there was the confrontation with a hang glider, it wasn't the issue of safety, it was how he handled it, and even when we convened the meeting, which I did, Mr. Priggy was difficult at the start of the meeting, very confrontational, and I think that's what the commission has seen over again, I think that's what Mr. Morgan has seen over again, and certainly that's what I've seen, I've had several conversations, and I was very clear with Mr. Priggy the last time we met, that it's, it's really how he deals with the city and other people that makes leasing him the property so difficult, and, and that's the issue. I mean, I think he's got a great business, he's, and I think the commission, again, you know, would, would say, "Yeah, it's, it's beneficial for the airport", but is it worth it when you have to deal with someone who continually stirs issues up at the airport, does not deal with other people very well, and, and certainly doesn't deal with city staff very well?
So, so if Mr. Priggy decides to, you know, play nice with everybody, then there won't be a problem?
Well, I, I think, again, if, if the council is interested in, in renewing the lease, I think that that's something that should be a consideration in the lease agreement, that there is some kind of a conduct, conduct expectation, because, you know, the hang glider decided not to charge, not press charges, or not pursue charges against Mr. Priggy, and, again, all of that, and I'll agree with, with the Prigies, that, that all got worked out, and, and it could have been handled much better from the very beginning, in terms of how to handle that, again, it's, you know, work with us, you know, try and, and be, you know, a constructive part of the airport community up there, not the problem, and, and clearly that's, I think, the observation that both the commission and staff has had related to the Priggies.
And there's obviously something to that, because you wouldn't just have the, the Airport Commission come up with a decision like that. Okay, so we have some more commenters, Michael Crocos?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, I did it right?
Yes, closing.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike Crocus.
Crocus.
Crocus, just like the flower, I have a couple of questions, actually, in reference to the RFP, I, when I was not, when I was working, not retired, I used to do RFPs for the, for the government, for governmental agencies, and one of the things we always did first, before we made any kind of decisions, or made any kind of comments, was do a preliminary interest, we send out preliminary interest to all people who are potentially interested in our developing of an RFP for whatever we were doing, in this case, it was drilling projects, groundwater projects, and so my question to Morgan Scott is, did he ever put out a preliminary request for interest, preliminary interest?
So, it's, you're tucking to the council?
Oh, yeah, okay, so my question is that, did he ever put it, and from what I understand, the only people he talked to are Red Rock Skydive, Greenlight, Bob Luna, Jim Gay, and Doug Hodges, John Patagit, and Scott Sivin, and if that wasn't a written RFP, it's useless, it means absolutely nothing, I used to do these, all right, so what, when he mentioned this at the council, at the committee meeting, I was at the, the Airport Commission meeting, to me, what that smacked of is bias, there's a bias here, all right? If you don't get a firm commitment to respond, everything else, every other comment about it is a bias, he said, "This is my, this is what I've heard, this is the phone calls I've made, as, do you have a written response to this?", if there's no written response, then there's no response, all right? Okay, so that's one of the things. The other thing that came up was the insurance issue, mentioning the insurance issue at the committee meeting, and then not having an accurate understanding of the insurance issue to the commission instituted, what again? A bias, we don't have, we don't know what's going on with the insurance issue, so what does that tell the committee? It tells the commission, "Well, we don't know, so there's gotta be a bias here, they don't have one, we don't know", so that's a bias, all right? The police reports, I have a real, a question about the police reports, half a dozen were, were talked about going to the airport, and one of the things that, that concerns me is that this is airport property, it's the city of Cottonwood's property, and the question is, has any comparable data ever been looked at, that the city of Cottonwood owns? The city of Cottonwood owns the park, has any police reports been compared with the number of people at each one of these locations, and the, the police responses? Well, it certainly wasn't given at the commission meeting, that, that there were, that I did a unbiased look at the number of incidents relative to the property that the city owns. As far as I know, nothing was done, so as far as I'm concerned, that's a bias, you looked at one thing, but you didn't look at the other. The other thing that, that I'd like to chat a little bit about is the, the down-the-road thing, right now, it looks like the city of, the city is looking at putting in a GPS system, and, well, if the city puts a GPS system, if I'm not mistaken, the FAA regulations put the city of Cottonwood then into a, into a Class E airspace, I believe, well, a Class E airspace precludes the, those people from flying in from Mingus Mountain, so those people that are, that are hang gliders will no longer be able to land at the airport if a GPS goes into, and this becomes a Class E airspace, right? FAA regulations, if, if I'm not mistaken, but overall, I looked at the justification and benefits of this, and my real question is this, regardless of what is said here, and what, what Doug Bartosz, city manager, says, to me personally, in my opinion, this is a railroad job. The city, the city, it looks like the city wants that building, and they'll do anything to get it, and I'm not saying, and that's what it looks like to me, you may be shaking your head, but that's what it looks like to me.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Mr. Garrison?
I got a question from Morgan, please, I, I can't imagine the city putting out an RFP for a, a skydiving contract, did we, and why would we?
Real quick, I apologize for being late, I want to look into the issue of, hey, when we bring in a GPS, what does that do to our airspace, and I apologize, I can't answer that right now, but I do want to find out, that's the first effort of that, you asked, though.
Why, why would we put out an RFP for, for a skydiving contractor? Why, why would we do that? I mean, we have space to rent, we don't necessarily go out, as far as I know, looking for specific users of that space, why would we put out an RFP for that, that business?
That, that's correct, if we do an RFP, it's an RFP for a business proposal, what that business brings to us is, is open, they can do skydives, they can sell airplane rides, they can sell pancakes at a Saturday morning breakfast, but what we're leasing, what we're talking about is a lease, and renewing or not renewing a lease, so, yes, if we do go out for proposals, it's not a skydive proposal, it's, the city has land to lease.
For a business.
For, for a business, and we're looking for proposals, we're looking for people to bring us proposals, and that's...
A business related to the airport, probably.
Yes, and it will mention that it was most recently occupied by a skydive company, but it will in no way limit their business to skydiving, or, you know, obviously, it will be limited to an aeronautical activity.
So, if the GPS, if that is true, and, and I'm not saying it's not, but, you know, as well as the skydiving, which is very important, I feel personally, to the economy of the, of the Verde Valley, I, I believe that hang gliding is also, we have a world-class hang gliding place on top of Mingus Mountain, and they're, they're homeless, I mean, and this is another economic development component, when you have a world-class hang gliding facility, so, you know, we all gotta play nice, we all gotta figure this out, how we can support each other, and it's, it is about economic development. I did, we didn't have Iris come up, Ms. Dobler, and talk about the insurance issue, would you like to make a few comments about that? I apologize, I should have gotten that, that a little bit sooner.
And Madam Mayor, may I, may I just sort of frame what I think Iris is gonna discuss, because if I were to discuss what Iris was gonna discuss, I'd be doing it secondhand, and I'd rather she do it, but, since the gentleman raised the insurance issue, as of first half, about, until about two weeks ago, the issue, the insurance issue was substantive, and, as Doug mentioned, a matter of manners, as of two weeks ago, we've gotten clarification on, on the insurance issue, and, and we think it's now just a matter of manners, because we now know that, that Red Rock appears to have the kind of insurance that the city asked for years ago, and, and was told that, that Red Rock would not provide, could not provide, and did not have to provide, which there, it's difficult insurance to secure, but it's only not required to be provided if the city requires it, if it's unavailable, and it's available, and, and the, the less he has it now, but years ago, and I guess this is time for Iris to talk about her, you know, interactions with, with the company when, when she tried to get proof of that, and this was right around the time of, of the Airfest accident, you might recall, the defense of which thankfully, the, the city is not to pay for, not had to pay for, but is approaching a, a couple of million dollars right now, so it's a, it's a legitimate concern.
Thank you. Ms. Dobler?
I don't have a lot to say about it, other than back in probably January, February, March timeframe of 2011, so I don't remember it all that well, but thinking back, looking back at some records, I know that I had met with Carl, and a former employee, Tim Costello happened to be there at the meeting, I believe Sharon was there, she may not have been, but I, my recollection is that she may have been at the meeting, and we all met at the airport facility, whatever the building is called there, and we discussed what was needed for their insurance, what was needed because of how the lease was written, what the lease required of them to submit to us insurance-wise, that they had not been and were not doing at all times, I believe that almost every year since then, we've had a difficult time getting their new certificates of insurance, COIs, on time, we had, I had asked them at the time, I know that if they were not going to get them to us on time, that they should at least suggest to their insurance companies to send us an automatic, to put us on an automatic renewal situation, so that we would get the insurances on time, which we do with all businesses that we work with here in the city and outside of the city, we've had difficulties even up into this year, getting the certificates of insurance, and I don't know that we have all of them that are current right now, I'd have to look back in files and see, I know that Morgan got one handed to him evidently from Sharon, I believe it was on November 5th, that was supposedly, I looked at the date on it, supposedly issued May 15th, or something of, of this year, which I had never seen, the city's address is on it, my address is on it, my office address is on it, but I had never seen a copy of that, so if it was mailed, or sent, or emailed to us, we don't have it, so I think that's my issue, is that I had a difficult time with Carl, getting him to respond, getting him to list us as additional insured, or have its insurance companies list us as additional insured, and that's something that's absolutely required in the lease.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garrison?
Um, nothing for Iris, thank you. Answering, one is this letter from FAA, and then the other is Mr. Crocus's comment about the parks, and the, the amount of calls we get at the parks, the parks are not rented, they're owned by the public, so we don't have tenants at the parks that we can, that we can calculate police calls against. I'm a landlord, that's, that's what I do, there's good tenants and there's bad tenants, the city in this case is a landlord, we have good tenants and we have bad tenants, and ever since I got seated on this council, it seems like we've just been inundated with paperwork moving back and forth about all the issues with this specific tenant, and everything has been contentious, the emails that we get are aggressive, the emails from past employees are aggressive, the comments from the public coming up to defend you are aggressive, everything is aggressive, your insurance agent was flat-out rude to the city in the way he responded to their requests, and I understand there's tension and there's some frustration, but the city doesn't need to spend 90% of its staff's time dealing with 1% of its tenant population, and to me, I love your business, I think it's a great asset to the community, I think having that in our community is good, you've been a great sponsor of bringing people into the Verde Valley, bringing people into Cottonwood, and a proponent of sharing what's beautiful about this area, I love the business, but you gotta get past the person that you're having to deal with, and to me, the city is just spending way too much time dealing with somebody who doesn't want to respond in a friendly and courteous manner, and deal with the city in the same way we want to deal with them, and so you can talk about all these other things, and it just, it just duss up the conversation, the conversation really comes down to, are you the type of tenant we want, are you the type of tenant that we'd rather not have, and you can move out onto the private property sector, and bring your business onto the airport in any way you can, just like anybody else is capable of doing, Bob Backus has some property up there, he'd love to sell you a space on, build your own building, you still have access to the airport, you can still run your business off the airport, you just wouldn't be the city's tenant anymore, so that's, I think, really at the heart of all this, what it comes down to, and I think that's what your Airport Commission is telling you, is, we're spending way too much time dealing with one specific issue instead of taking care of the whole airport, so that's, I guess that was my response to some of those comments.
Thank you, very well said, if, can we get the, we have a couple more?
I just had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I never saw a response from the insurance company, you saw a response?
Yeah, we had several emails, we've been getting emails, well, I've been getting emails and seeing emails on this, and seeing the police reports since I got seated, and within the last two months, we've probably gotten an email or two a week, and they've been, they've been very non-friendly, it's, it's just not a good working relationship, and when you're in business, you want to work with people who want to work with you.
I don't remember receiving this, that's all.
Okay, so we do have a, a couple more speakers, Randy Bully? Bully?
Bule.
Bule, thank you.
First off, I would like to say, I just want to get along, I am a private pilot, I have a Cessna at Cottonwood, correct, right now, I also fly hang gliders, I've been flying this mountain since 82, that being said, I've met Carl on three different occasions, and all of them ended up in altercations, the first time I met him, he ran out in the middle of the landing field, swinging his arms in front of me, and I would find out later from another pilot standing there, he was yelling at me, "I can't land there!", this was the little, middle of the landing zone, which is public property, also, the airport plan says, we generally land between the taxiway and the runway unless there's an airplane moving, then we land at the parachute zone, that's what I was doing, he ran out in front of me and tried to stop me from landing, I gotta, I can't go around, luckily, I did not hit him and went, hurt myself. Second altercation, I landed there, he came out and dragged me about 30 feet in my hang glider, caused $500 damage to it, I called the police then also. The third time, he locked the gate to prevent me from getting off the airport, the gate beside his building, he told everybody that, finally the police came, they unlocked it and let me go. Fourth altercation was between him and my wife, she was parked in the parking lot about 100 yards from his office, waiting for me, he came up and intimidated her, told her that she had to leave the property, there was a city ordinance against her parking there unless she was brought in by a business, and he would call the police if she did not move, we have this on video. I just want to get along, this guy does not appear to be someone that is safety-conscious whatsoever, he has attuned that everything belongs to him and he won't share, he doesn't want to play along with everybody else. As far as the FAA... play along with everybody else. As far as the FARs, the hang gliding yielding right away to everybody, that is wrong. Part 103 states we have to yield right away to all registered aircraft. So, and, we don't want to be near the parachutes when they're coming down, that's dangerous to us and them. They're coming down about five times faster than we are. It's easy enough for us to get out of the way, and there's also an area right over the parachute zone that we don't fly over. We don't fly over a cone there for safety's reasons. The only time we do is when we're coming in for a landing from the side, because there's an airplane moving on the airport. Ninety percent of us now land at Tenth Street just to avoid this man. I just want to get along. That's what I would like. Whatever it takes, I would like to get along and stop this harassment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Algradigen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could, I'd like to just shed a light on a little of the mendacity I heard. First of all, a GPS approach is not gonna change it to a Class B airspace. New York, Chicago, Phoenix are Class B airspaces. I don't think this approach is gonna affect it, it's not gonna affect the airport at all. Nonsense. Some of you probably know I spent a half a century in the airplane business, and I was a leaseholder in Sky Harbor, and Scottsdale, and Falcon Field, and I can tell you that if my insurance was not in place, exactly the way the city wanted it, not the way I wanted it, I couldn't operate. And if my insurance was lapsed, my lease was terminated on the spot. I was appalled when I found out that the city has been so irresponsible as to let this go on and on and on. And Madam Mayor, you know what we just went through, a liability for five years. So, the other thing I could, I don't want to address what other people say, because, Steve, you know, that's hearsay, it's worthless. But I can tell you, in my time as being chairman of the Airport Commission, and being involved in the initial leases with you and you, this guy has got an aggressive personality that's over the top. Randy did an excellent job of really describing the crux.
Analyzing.
We need the aggravation. And by the way, you were right, the hang gliding spot here at Mingus Mountain is one of the world-class, not Arizona-class, United States world-class hang gliding spots. So, it's very important. And I guess bottom line is, do we need the aggravation?
Thank you for your comments.
Well, I don't have other things to say, and this really kind of gets to it. This guy says, "Well, our police department is just going out and making police reports?" You know the kind of character this young man is, you think he makes all this stuff up? I almost fell over when Priggy started saying that stuff. I don't know, I'm seventy-five years old, and I've never had a police report, so maybe something's wrong with me.
Okay, so, just one thing, synopsis of one police report here. This was back in thirteen, but it says that, it says in black and white, Carl Priggy committed criminal damage and disorderly conduct at Red Rock skydiving on Mingus Avenue by grabbing the hang glider owned by Buell and pulling it approximately twenty feet. So, I'm just, this is in black and white in a police report. Created criminal damage. So, anyway, any other comments from members of the council? I think Mr. Garrison summarized.
Do we have any more speakers coming up to speak from the public?
That's...
That's it?
That's it, so, yeah.
Well, you know, I would like to say something, you know, to sit here and, I gotta tell you, whether we like it or not, there's people that don't care for certain personalities. I've been flat-told that I have an abrasive personality. I don't agree. Other people might agree, I don't agree. You know, if this gentleman has a strong personality, we could call it aggressive, we could call it over the top. All I'm saying is that this whole situation can be taken care of by everybody cooperating with each other, as they say in the playground, play nice, follow the rules, and that seems to be what this is coming down to.
Are you finished?
Hold on a moment.
Okay. And any other comments?
I'll, I'll...
Mr. Ilinski?
You know, I agree with what Randy said, I agree with what Ruben is saying. I think that anybody could, Mr. Priggy could move his business off airport property, and still conduct his business. I'm appalled at the amount of police reports that we had to read through. It, you know, it just disturbs me that we have somebody renting our property who would impact the city in such a negative way. At the same time, Mr. Priggy's made substantial improvements on the property, he's, I'm assuming, paid his lease payment on time every month. So, you know, given that, I don't...
Yes, no, Mr. Rodriguez?
Up until recently, no. At that one point in time, I know, and now this, recently, he's been, he's been really good. There was a point in time where we struggled to get payments from him. But this had, recently, he has been fairly regular, but we did struggle at one point. And it was, it was a confrontational issue. And, but it wasn't, it wasn't something we couldn't handle at that point. We settled it, and got caught up at that time.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my point is this, I, he's made a substantial investment in the, in the community and in his business to get it going. By all accounts, he is not playing nice, and I do believe you're aggressive with folks, I've heard the same thing. But I'm willing to...
Give another chance?
Well, give another chance, but not with this lease. Certainly with a new lease, once this expires, I think if the city's going to give, you know, another chance, I think we need to iron out a few of the details that have come up tonight, and make sure that everybody's playing by the rules, and we have open communication and cooperation with all the parties that need to use that airport. It's public space, it belongs to the citizens, and everybody has a right to use it, so one person can't trump everybody else's rights. So, I think if we, if we do want to renew the lease, which I'm, you know, I'm leaning toward, I would, I would like to see a new lease drafted, and a shorter, a shorter term, a shorter term on the lease, which would be exactly, I think, one year is fair. Make sure everybody's playing fair, and everybody is satisfied.
Mr. Garrison?
I, when we started this conversation, I leaned towards the direction you're heading now, but I keep thinking back to all the incidents that have happened with this tenant, and the airport, and the other users who have a right to that space as well. And conversations I've had with numerous staff members, and people who use the airport and pay to use the airport on a regular basis, and it, I think, if you want to draw up a new lease and say, "We're all gonna be, we're all gonna be nice to each other, we're all gonna play fairly," it isn't gonna get you any further towards that end than where we're at today, because I think the staff has gone so far above and beyond trying to do that for the last year, at least the last year. Nothing's gonna change. If it didn't change over the last year, it's not gonna change if you change the lease. You have to change the problem. And, and I agree, I think he's put a substantial investment into that business, I love the business, I think it's a great asset to have to the airport, it just isn't the right person doing that at the airport, and that's what I have a problem with. And I don't think any way you change that lease is gonna change the situation.
I agree, and, you know, the past's performance projects future performance, and this may well be true in this situation. And the Airport Commission has made it very clear to Mr. Priggy how they feel, and I think the council's making it very clear how they feel. So, I believe, you know, a one-year investment, you know, a one-year commitment from the council that as long as he plays by the rules, I think is reasonable. He's been put on short notice, that if you want to lease the property from the city, these are the rules. You know, I, I would hope things change, I'm an optimist. I hope things would change. As Mr. Buell, Buell said, "We just want to get along." So, you know, maybe this is our last chance of trying to get everybody to get along, and if it doesn't work out, then after one year...
And so, if everyone does get along after that one year, what do you recommend for a term after that?
I would say that we'd talk about that in a year. I don't think we need to make that recommendation now.
I think it'd be nice to know going into this, what's at stake.
As in?
Well, I mean, if they're gonna be there for the next year, and not know what's gonna happen after that year, you know, I myself would like to know, do I get an option for, for, you know, another five years, another ten years, or what? That's the carrot at the end of the, end of the rope there. Play nice, and this is what we get?
I don't know, maybe I'd go with five years with an annual review on whether we're all getting along.
That'd be fine. You gotta understand, these people are in business here, you know, they can't, you can't...
Well, I mean, what's at stake here is they may not have a place to be. I mean, that's what the recommendation is. And so, you know, I think if we do anything, we're really going above and beyond, is how I feel. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I agree with Ruben, and I do agree with Tim. I, I think that rather than take, I don't know, you can take drastic action and say, "Let's end it," or you can take some kind of corrective action and say, "Okay, you're on probation." You know, it's hard for me, because it is such a good business for the community, but I think having a rider in there about, everybody gets along, and play it and see how it works.
And how do you legislate behavior?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's, that, we can't, we can't. And it gets back to Randy's point, you know, we have good tenants, we have bad tenants, we can't, we can't make a bad tenant be a good tenant. I mean, behavior is behavior, you know, but there are certain things that we've discussed tonight, for example, you know, providing the COI on time, and issues like that, that, and there's no reason why any business shouldn't do that, if the city requires it. We have to put timelines on that, and we probably should for all of our lease arrangements. Who, you know, what property he's in control of, does he have the right to go out on the, on the public, you know, publicly-owned landing zone and drag a hang glider thirty feet? And he does not have that right. You know, if he chooses to try to occupy that space or control that space, then he loses his option to lease the property from the city. I mean, I feel like there's some things that we can, in black and white, you know, address in a new lease agreement that would spell out how he can continue to lease property, public property, from the city, from the citizens.
Mr. Dowling?
Just a real quick question for Steve. What's the current status of the city's right to terminate a lease up there? For example, can, is there a clause that says we can terminate it anytime, given a specific reason?
I think speaking generally, not about a particular lease, if I'm looking at the language, I think typically we have a term certain, and then there are provisions on default, and termination for default. And usually what happens on a default, a default is a failure to comply, or a violation of affirmative obligations under a lease. There is, unless there's some exigency, there is notice and an opportunity to cure. So, a tenant is given notice that they're in default under a certain provision or expectation, and they're given a certain timeline to come into compliance. If they don't come into compliance, then the lease can be terminated during the term. You know, a lease term, there's a property interest in it. So, the, the city's remedies are greater between lease terms. This is, this is one of those opportunity moments. It just, it's a lot less difficult for the city to make a decision, a policy decision, one way or the other. And what I, what I've heard, you know, trying to synthesize the concerns and observations of council, the, the way I think about drafting that, one possibility for drafting that is a one-year term annually renewable. So, the council gets to, you know, it's sort of rolling one-year terms for some period of time, which we do with contracts, not infrequently.
Well, that's a very good possibility there.
All right. Well, okay, I want to get that question. In looking at this, I'm conflicted on it in that, you know, life is just conflict, but I concur with Tim. You know, I hate to see a local, you know, this thing, everybody loves the local business part of it. They're bringing people here, I, I think that their reviews by their customers may be much different than the reviews they've had with the city. And perhaps if there was a focus on their part of, you know, trying to receive those same reviews and that, and give that same attention to the city in the situation, maybe we wouldn't be here today in such a conflict. That said, I really like the idea of having a local business here. I mean, it seems like every two seconds, people are saying, "What can we do to get people here? What can we do to keep business here? What can I, you know?" I look out there, I believe there's a young man who's a, who's a pilot, who's on the football team that I helped out, or not a pilot, he's a jumper, sorry, and he's on a football team that I helped out. So, it's, it's nice to see somebody that's actually staying here in the community, and providing a service, and bringing people here. So, I have just a hard time with giving that up, and I know that there are difficulties to it. But I think that, you know, I, my position basically is that I would like to see them, I'd like to see them stay here and keep doing good business. If somebody else wants to come in and compete, please do, and that's how it should work, open markets and all that fun stuff. And if they can provide a better service, then that ends up, you know, that's how it works. But, I don't want to be the one so much making decisions on winners and losers, you know, because if they weren't running a decent business, they would be closed by now. So, they're at least running enough of a business to where they're still open. People are showing up to pay money, and, you know, that's kind of what the city relies on to keep itself going. So, you know, I would definitely say, "Let's try and all get along," and I would like to have something in there in another lease that would ensure that happens. But I would think that, you know, like Mr. Gradigen said, in his leases, he's been in, if he didn't have something in there, done. If you didn't have this applied, done. So, to a small extent, I think it's almost, somewhat falls back on the city for maybe not having enforced those things to the fullest extent throughout the, throughout the life of this lease. I don't know all the language in it, but it comes back to us, and that we've let it go along and fester this long, and created somewhat of that situation. So, I would like to see it go forward, I'd like to make sure they stay out there doing work, but I'd also appreciate very much that they put as much energy towards working with the city as they do with their jumpers and their, their clients and customers, and as they've done with the skydivers, to try and meet in the middle. You know, there hasn't, hasn't been any new situations, and that's a good thing, and I'd like to see that maintained.
Mr. Pratt, and then Mr. Ilinski?
Again, I, I kind of echo what they're saying, and I really do think there is a problem, yes, but I do think a one-year lease would be a probationary act, and that very often solves problems, rather than just a condemnation act, where you get rid of the person. So, I think a probationary act makes sense here in this case.
Before we get Mr. Ilinski, I think the Vice Mayor wanted to say a few words.
Yeah, I've been listening to this, I think if a contract is drawn, any infraction whatsoever would terminate the lease immediately. That would be a nice suggestion. Any, any police reports, anything like that, any late payments, I mean, it is a probationary year, so if a lease is drawn up, that's glad I could see in it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Ilinski?
I wanted to just talk about what Jesse was saying, he said that if, that if we didn't renew the lease, we'd essentially be putting him out of business, but it would certainly be hardship for their business, but they can operate their business anywhere up there. We're just really talking about them leasing property from us. You know, I think they do run a good business, and I think their clients are very satisfied. And that, you know, that speaks highly of their business model, but, you know, they would still essentially be able to operate from anywhere. But, I would hope that they would work... But I would hope that they would work better with the city if we give them one-year option here.
And I would like to say that I do feel that our city staff have, they've done, they've gone above and beyond, and they have given chances and given chances, and I really don't, you know, want to put a cloud over their heads that they haven't tried. I mean, it's here. So I don't, you know, I want to thank the staff and ask them to continue. If council decides to continue a lease, for whatever length of term, that I know they've tried very hard to work with the leasing.
And I would just, through my statement, I did not mean to infer anything other than that. I just, you know, I didn't want it to go that direction, just to say that I think that we have control over the lease and our future with this. And I'd just like to make sure that we maintain control.
Okay, so what I think I'm hearing from, okay, Mr. Garrison?
Yeah, I can't believe we're going down this road. Personally, I mean, I empathize with the situation, but you've got an airport manager, two airport managers actually, that have done nothing but deal with this tenant over and over again. You've got a town manager, city manager, that spent an inordinate amount of time dealing with this incident. You have our IRS sitting back at the back, spending an inordinate amount of time dealing with this issue. Our attorney has spent a ton of time. We've had to call in attorneys to deal with this tenant. We've had to drag the police up there over and over again. And you're wanting to create now a special one-year lease for one tenant of all of our city properties? I just don't get that. I mean, we have one lease, we have one type of tenant, and you put it out there, and if people can't follow the rules of a typical lease, why are we having to take and redraw leases to deal with a specific issue of a specific tenant?
Right. I agree. I honestly differ in that I don't think it should be a special one-year lease. I think it should be the same lease everybody else has to deal with, and they should be held to the same standard. But I do know that we're also looking at this, I think one of the other justifications was that so that we could redo the lease. You know, because we were not real happy with the way the current lease is. Am I understanding that correctly? So there were certain things going forward we wanted to redo the lease for anyway. So if we're trying to, you know, we're at one point saying, "We don't, we're doing this so that we can redo the lease," but then to say, "We don't want to redo the lease," you know, I would say, I'm not really so much for the one-year thing. I think it should be whatever the term's going to be, and if there's violations in there, that's how, it should be dealt with accordingly. I don't think we need to do a special one-year thing because they should, like you said, we shouldn't have to have a one-year lease on this property, a six-month lease on that property, and a five-year lease on that property. It should be the same lease we do for everybody, and everybody should just be accountable for their lease.
I agree. If I may, I think that that's, you know, an issue. I think that saying that staff has worked and worked and worked with them is not so much credit to staff, no disrespect, but I mean, it should be in black and white. And staff shouldn't have to handhold somebody to walk them through. You know, if your COI isn't in, if your payment isn't due on time, that's that. You know, we shouldn't have to call up, hold your hand, you know, do all that. It should just be black and white. So I would hope that we do this as all of our leases come up.
From them.
Well, it's just that, a recommendation. Doesn't mean we have to agree with it.
That's true. But we often, out of respect for who we've appointed,
Well, we're not disrespecting him.
Do consider it.
Just having to have different opinions.
I honestly agree wholeheartedly with the recommendation, and I agree with staff recommendation. I just think that, you know, I want to give the Prigies an opportunity to make it right by all parties. And I mean, no disrespect to the commission. I know that they labored over this, and I know, you know, I... That's where I'm at.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
Let me ask you a question. So tonight, the way this is presented tonight, this deals with only a non-renew?
It's just the recommendation that's offered by staff.
It says requested action here, non-renew. I understand that.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Haddig, it's kind of exactly right. I think that's the subject matter, but the council is free to make whatever motion on the subject matter
Okay.
and make, take whatever legal action related to the subject matter it decides to take.
Okay, well, that was the next question. Thank you.
It's really a very difficult decision.
So let me make a motion here, see if I can get this right here. So make a motion to renew the existing lease with Red Rock Skydiving to be for the next year with a review at that time. I'm not really sure how to state this, this whole thing here. So...
And Madam Mayor, if I, Mr. Haddig, if I
Go ahead.
might offer to suggest, you might choose to direct staff, you know, just give us, give staff the broad outlines of what council wants done, and then let staff sit down with the Prigies and perhaps with the commission and try to, you know, carry out that mandate. I don't think it should be incumbent on council right now to, you know, get into the weeds too much on it unless you want to.
And the other thing that, in the middle of your motion, but that I'm concerned about is there might not be time before December 31st to get all of this done? And so should the motion contain a clause that we would go month to month until it was decided?
Madam Mayor, I think that would be appropriate. I think as a matter of law, the lease would convert to a month-to-month lease and... But I think it would be appropriate for the council to specify that.
If I may also make one, we're all picking apart your motion, but I would recommend to not approve the existing lease, to not continue the existing lease, but to draft a new lease that would hold over until such time.
So not to renew the current lease, okay, is part of it? And to direct staff to to draft that yearly, that year lease or more than that?
I think a year.
Year.
A year. Okay, forgetting half of this already.
Which means that the city could terminate the lease with any violation immediately?
Right, and that would be direction to staff
Yeah.
as far as that goes. But tonight, we're looking at... See, it's still confusing because if we're going to not renew the existing lease, that's what we're doing, and directing staff to redraw the new lease for a year with terms and conditions that, you know, they feel appropriate. I'm not sure how to verbalize this whole thing here.
Think you did a good job right there.
I think you did too.
Okay, I don't want to repeat myself, so that's my motion.
So can the city clerk sort of review what you think you heard? And then we will go from there to kind of tweak it?
Yeah, Mary Ann, take it from here.
The motion was moved to renew the existing lease with Red Rock Skydiving to be for the next year with a review at that time.
So, okay.
Then there were several adjustments.
Lots of conversation. So we did decide during the conversation not to renew the current lease, so we... And he doesn't want to rephrase the motion, so let me, let me help.
Go ahead.
Okay. The city council makes a motion, or no, I make a motion, no. Mr. Haddig made a motion.
On my behalf.
Okay. To not renew the lease after December 31st. Instead, we direct city staff to create a new lease, working with the Prigies and the airport commission, and realizing that this probably cannot be done before the end of this term of the lease, we would recommend that you go ahead with this current lease on a month-to-month basis until such time the new lease can be created and approved by the city council.
That's a lot clearer, yes.
Does that do...
I think Robert of Robert's Rules would say that with Mr. Haddig's consent, he withdrew his motion and he made a superseding motion.
Okay, does that...
If Mr. Haddig's good with that, it sounds like he is.
So he can second it then? And really, it was that we co-author did?
And yes, and I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Mr. Garrison? And thank you very much. Vice Mayor, did we get a comment from you?
Yes.
Yes, she voted aye.
Okay, she voted aye.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to inform the council that, and I think Mr. Horton agrees with me, that this email from Mr. Garcia is very disappointing. We've worked very diligently with the FAA to open up communications, to solve issues of mutual concern, and I was never contacted about his questions about this issue. I don't believe Mr. Morgan was contacted until today. Our attorney wasn't contacted, neither Steve or our contract attorney.
That is disappointing.
And clearly, this is an overreach into what is a local issue, a local decision issue, which had he contacted us, he would have gotten the entire picture as opposed to trying to insert himself into something that he clearly shouldn't have been inserting himself into.
And so I...
We will be contacting him.
You will contact him. I hope you will on behalf of
Express that concern, yeah.
staff and the council, because that's just wrong.
Madam Mayor, I'll phone him in the morning if that's okay.
Please. So did we need to do anything else for Robert's Rules of Order? Okay, we're good on that. Okay, so moving on to the next item, Resolution Number 2770, declaring and adopting the result of the city's general election held on November 4th, 2014. Madam City Clerk, yes?
Oh, okay, never mind. I thought this was a pretty easy one, so I was going to make a motion.
Oh, well, she has to report out to the public.
Madam Mayor, Council?
Can we wait just a minute till we, everybody's out so we can hear you?
It's amazing.
Is it ever?
Mr. Bertus, it's amazing how quick you can get a response to something that doesn't matter.
Right, yeah, when it takes us...
We take months to get a response back on questions.
Yeah, that was out of line. Okay, so are we, so if we could now have some quiet again so that the city clerk can give her report on the election results for November 4th, 2014?
Madam Mayor, honorable council members, as you know, the city held a special election in combination with the county and state general election that was held on November 4th, 2014 to place Proposition 433, which was a question of approving the Cottonwood General Plan 2025 on the ballot. I received the official final results from Yavapai County Elections Department this morning, and the total ballots cast were 2,969. However, the total votes on the proposition were 2,603. The difference, the discrepancy between the two numbers was there were some people that voted the ballot for the other measures but did not vote on the general plan. Out of those 2,603 votes, 1,554 ballots were cast as a yes, and 1,049 votes were cast as a no vote against the general plan. But the yeses were 59.70%, and the general plan proposition passed. So the city's general plan 2025 was approved by the voters.
Almost.
So Resolution Number, what is our resolution number?
2770.
Resolution Number 2770 will declare and adopt the results of the general election, and after the council, if the council approves the resolution, then the canvas of the election is formalized and approved.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Any comments from the public on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Pratt?
I move to accept the final results of the city's November 4th, 2014, general election as submitted by the Yavapai County Elections Department, and approve Resolution Number 2770, declaring and adopting the results of the election.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2770 by title only.
Resolution Number 2770, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, declaring and adopting the results of the general election held on November 4th, 2014. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. Claims and adjustments?
And Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes.
If I could just, since we made the planning staff sit here through the last item, I just want to publicly thank the planning staff, and particularly Mr. Scully, for all the great work that they did on the general plan and all the effort they made to get out there and get people's input and share the plan and make sure that people were really aware of what the plan was all about, so...
Absolutely, and thank you so much for all you did, for being here tonight. And I think it's a really, really excellent plan, and thanks to your hard work through these past several years, it passed by almost 20% more yeses than no's. So that's a pretty good job, you guys. Thank you. Okay. Claims and adjustments?
I move, we pay the claims. Second.
So Mr. Ilinski made the motion, Mr. Garrison seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn. Vice Mayor, where are you?
I am.
The mayor made the motion, Mr. Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned.